All right, welcome everybody. We'll call please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Pat Rooney.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Aaron Lundstedt.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Okay, we have everybody tonight. So our agenda, tonight, we will open up briefly for public comment. Anybody would like to speak? Remind you that you please look at your comments for three minutes. We have an update on Daring. It looks like, oh exciting. We'll have updates from our school board representatives. We'll have the superintendent's report. We'll approve the consent vote agenda, which we reviewed two weeks ago. Brief updates from facilities, finance, and program personnel. Anything from CEDO today? Okay, we have CEDO update, I S B. Okay. And then we have a brief executive session, after which we will not be taking any action other than to return to open session. All right? All right. Anybody from the public who would like to speak tonight? No? Okay. Darren, committee.
Yeah, yeah. Come on, let's go. We have a whole crew to vent tonight.
Did it something I said?
Yeah.
Something I said?
Well, when you're presenting about a committee, you have to have a committee to present, correct? So we're excited tonight to share information about our Daring mission and really what Daring looks like in our D128 classrooms, athletic fields, offices, right? So as we've rolled out the Daring mission, we continue to look at, what does it look like if we are really fulfilling that mission for all of our students? How do we help students become dreamers and doers, aware, resilient, and healthy, inquisitive, nimble, and global? And so toward that end, for each of the educational presentations that we'll share during this school year, the focus will be on Daring and what that looks like in our various settings. So for the first meeting, we would like to share that we formed a committee, the Daring Committee, to really apply that lens to everything that we do as a district. How are our systemic practices aligned with the mission? Where are we doing that really well? And how can we use that as a model for other practices and strategies? And where do we see areas where we might need to move forward a little bit in our thinking about how we're creating situations that allow students to develop those attributes? So today, we convened a committee made up of over 40 representatives of our certified staff, our administration at both buildings and in the district office, and we came together to really ask this essential question. How might we purposefully and systemically connect teaching and learning to the Daring mission? Each person who came to the committee meeting today was asked to bring an artifact, something that represents a practice, a strategy, something they're doing that either is illustrative of where we're applying the mission well, or, and/or, where we might need to grow and improve. We gathered together as a group, examined those artifacts, and had really enriching conversations about what we would like to pursue as a committee this year to get us closer to being able to define what Daring looks like. And so that took the form of a table activity. We had eight different tables and lots of rich discussions. And then we, each table, shared out at least three or four topics that they really wanted to pursue. We looked for common themes among those topics, landed on kind of the top 10 that we thought we would prioritize, and then completed a form to rank order those things that we wanted to focus on first. We're excited about where the committee will go and the kinds of topics that we will pursue. And so here's this crew that was all part of our meeting today that are going to share some of the things that we talked about today and perhaps things that we'll be updating you on in the future. So first, John Gillian.
Thanks, Rita.
You're welcome.
I looked around the table, and I think I'm the only one who has received my 25-year watch for working in the district for 25 years. And I say that because, over time, we obviously do a lot of great things in the district, but one of the things that we find ourselves saying, I wouldn't say often, but every once in a while, is, in answer to the question, "Why do we do that?", we just have always done it that way. And it's kind of an institutional thing that if you work in an organization long enough, there are some things you just do because that's the way that we've always done them. And I think one of the refreshing things about this Daring Committee as we processed through some ideas this afternoon was that we're willing to look at and kind of challenge the status quo and kind of relook at that question, "Why do we do it that way?", and not be satisfied with, that's just the way we've always done it. There's a lot of things in a school system that you might find yourself saying that, whether it's how we schedule our time for adults in professional development, for our kids in a day period day, whether it's what we do with assessments like final exams, whether it's something like a class rank, which we tackled years ago, but those kinds of systemic things that, over time, kind of get old and the reasons aren't necessarily Daring reasons anymore, I think I'm excited that we're going to tackle some of those. So I'll hold off on naming them specifically because we've still got some work to flesh some of those things out, but that's one of the things I'm encouraged about as we face this Daring Committee.
Hello. As communications director for the district, it was exciting for me to be a part of the group because one of the themes that came up with all of the different tables at today's meeting was communications. And how, since we've launched the Daring mission, the acronym, everyone knows Daring, but they don't really know what it looks like or what all those individual letters stand for. And what we really talked a lot about was maybe an overarching communication plan with Daring that would talk more to the community, not just students, not just parents and staff, but the community in general, and getting everyone to be sort of a Daring community. So my artifact that I brought to the table was my new snowball microphone, which I'm hoping to use for podcasting, which will be like our Daring podcast. So we're excited to start doing some new things in terms of communication and see what else comes out of the team.
I think one of the exciting things from working just today with the committee is, I'm not in the classroom anymore, and I've been out of the classroom for, you know, quite a few years, but the teachers, you know, that I was able to communicate and talk with today, looking at the Daring mission, that their willingness to try new things and take risks in the classroom, all for the benefit of, you know, our students and how they, how you can learn better and learn more. And not just, you know, stand up in front of the class and lecture, but to try different things, whether it's project-based learning or even, you know, across the curriculum, working with other classes. So their willingness to take, I think, those risks, but really, part of the reason why they kind of want to be part of this is to, how can we expand on that and get that momentum that they're doing and that a few of their colleagues are doing more in the district, a little bit more? So it's exciting really to talk to them and see their energy and see how they can expand that a lot more with support of their colleagues, but also support of administration and Board of Education.
In addition to the Daring mission, one of the kind of ideas that was present in the room and became a subcommittee that is kind of, well, not an official subcommittee yet, but kind of an area of interest that people were looking at and talking about was equity. And so we talked as a whole group around how, when we put our Daring mission onto our institution and look at the actions that we take through a Daring lens, we also want to use an equity lens and kind of understand the way that Daring is for all of our students and all members of our school community. And so a lot of conversation was had around this idea of making sure that our system is one that supports all learners and making sure that the professional development that we're providing is differentiated in a way to support all members of our staff, so from our new teachers to our veteran teachers, and to make sure that an equity lens is applied to all of the work that we're doing. So I was very encouraged by that and excited by that work. And as John said, I think what this is going to allow us to do is take many of our practices and not to change them outright for chainsake, but to really examine them through a couple of different lenses and say, "Do they still serve a purpose? And are they still serving our students in the way that we believe that they once did? And if not, what are the ways we can alter them, adjust them, change them to better serve all of our students and to do so in a way that's aligned to our Daring mission?" I think we're at the very beginning stages, clearly, of this, but for those of you that have been on the board, you know, you've seen us go from Daring as the development of our graduate profile and sort of the beginning of our mission, and now, over the two years that I've been in district, it's become ubiquitous. Everybody knows that we have Daring, and everyone understands, at least on the staff, kind of what we're doing with that and the elements of it. But now, I think we're moving into that next phase, that action phase, of taking practices, either existing or ones that don't yet exist, and starting to incorporate them through the lens of the Daring mission. I anticipate that as we come back this year for our educational reports to you, you'll hear a lot about that as well as our equity work as well.
So that sets the stage. Thank you for our future presentations, looking at the practices related to our Daring mission and how it does really incorporate everything that we do for students. And so we can't really be daring for students if we're not including them in the conversation. So I see that we have a lot of students here present today. One of the goals of the Daring Committee, once we get ourselves organized, is to include your voice in the committee as well. So I challenge our students who are here listening, that when the invitation goes out, to think about joining us in this Daring work, that you say, "Yes, I would be happy to join the conversation." So we look forward to sharing more of our progress as the year goes on, and we're just excited about the continuing work of ensuring that our students are graduating with the Daring attributes that we think are so important to success in their post-secondary pursuits.
Rita, thanks to you and the team in the committee that will involve student voices at some point. We've talked with the board, we've talked internally in the organization about the importance of being able to assess and measure continual growth and achievement with our students. And over time, all organizations have to restart their upward curve. And really, Daring, we started working on Daring a couple of years ago, and that whole concept was to start the next curve at District 28, the next upward curve. What we all clearly know logically is that all organizations will peak and then will start falling down. And if you don't have a plan to start the new upward curve, then we're already on a downward trajectory before we figure out that we're there. So this is the heart and soul of the restart of that curve, and we're well along the way. So Rita, thank you for your leadership and everyone's work on this, of course, on this large committee. We really appreciate it on behalf of the district.
Any comments or questions for any of you?
I'll ask one. So, and Tom, you brought up, I mean, if I recall, we really did start a lot of this with that whole idea of what the graduate profile is and we want to aspire to. And I guess I'd ask, you know, we're now almost two years into it, or in our second, second year, third year, whatever. And I guess I'd ask two things. One, would we change anything relative to what we set out to do originally? And then, two, I'd say, you know, where do we see our biggest gaps really still in terms of that profile we aspire to, you know? What do we really need to fix? Because I think that, I think it is important to keep foremost in our mind. Okay? And I bring this up because I had a conversation with my brother last week, and even at the university level, they are asking that same very question. Okay, what do they need to do to make sure the kids are prepared in, you know, the next decade and so on and so forth? So it kind of inspired me to rethink about that a little bit.
I don't think that we would change anything. I think the work that we did has been very powerful, and what we started to create as a graduate profile has become our mission, which goes much beyond others that are just kind of creating their portrait of a graduate. We've made it our mission to achieve this. And so where the gaps exist are in, where are we missing opportunities for students to develop those attributes? Often when we interview students about their learning, and you guys can confirm whether this is true or not, you tell us that you love your teachers, you love your experiences, but sometimes it feels like you're living in silos, that while our work is disciplinary, everything we do outside of school is interdisciplinary. And we do have a lot of interdisciplinary experiences for students, but helping students to discover those connections between disciplines, to apply their learning in authentic settings, to have experiences that will help them discover what they want to do when they leave us, I would say that's what we're working on really, really intentionally as we form these different groups. So, and how will we measure? How will we know that we've succeeded in ensuring that every student meets the goals of the mission? So I think the mission itself is great. It takes graduate profiles a step beyond where other districts have taken it. And now the work is, how do we begin to ensure those experiences happen for students that we can really directly connect? We are doing this for students so that they will gain these attributes, and we know we will have succeeded when we can measure their acquisition of those attributes. We see their success in some measurable way. So I know this work is happening in a lot of different places. The challenge of the work everywhere is that connection between your goals and aspirations and the measures of your success. How do you connect those things? I don't know.
That's, I just would add, that's, for me, one of the reasons I'm excited about this next phase of the work in this committee is because I do think it's the gap analysis that we're doing, because for any one of us, it's hard to have our arms around the entire system. And so what this does, by bringing in so many different staff members from both buildings, we may walk into the room with a hypothesis or a hunch, like, "I don't think this is aligned with our Daring mission." But in the process of talking about that, you find out, well, it actually is, or that a piece of it that I didn't know was in place was there. It also allows our system to kind of unearth those areas to say, "Yeah, here are some areas where we do have gaps," and then to find the consensus of which ones do we want to tackle first. So I think, to your point about identifying where are those gaps, this is the process that leads us to that discovery.
I would also like to ask the school board reps, as you're listening to this and you're thinking about this, if your voice was at the committee table today, where would you identify the gaps? I don't want to put you on the spot, but as you're thinking about it, can you help us? If you were thinking about being around that table with us, what would you like us to focus on? Any ideas?
Not on the spot or anything. Yeah, we could definitely think about that more so that we have something to bring up next time. But regarding what you were saying with that interdisciplinary focus in, like, the classroom setting, one thing that I'm really happy to see is with new classes like AP Seminar and AP Research, even though they're really only, like, taken up by a pretty select group of students right now, they are at their core, I think, pretty centered around the Daring mission, because it's really not like it's just one subject. It's not like it's just a topic that you're learning. You're really guiding yourself throughout the whole thing, studying whatever it is that you fancy in any sort of light, whether it be more, like, historical or whether it be more scientific. It's great to see that in a classroom setting.
And I'll note that, and I think Mr. Gluskin did this as well, but like, Dr. Reeve has us review the Daring mission and put our research question into the Daring mission, that how does it apply to each aspect of it?
And we see that in a number of activism fair at Vernon Hills that are connecting their activism projects to the mission as well. The Global Scholar capstone that no one is taking yet because it's running for the first time second semester is another example of a course like AP Seminar and AP Research that is totally up to students' interests, passions, desire to inquire about some challenge that they'd like to solve. So that's another example, like AP Seminar and Research that you shared, of course, work that will do that for students.
Also, as a student that's involved in a lot of different activities at school, I would love to be a part of something like the Daring Committee and have another chance to voice my opinions on what's going on in the school. And I think that's really awesome, that adults in this district are allowing students the opportunity to voice their thoughts on everyday life at school.
Well, we look forward to hearing more from each of you. Maybe we'll make that a regular feature of your report, if you identify gaps or topics for the Daring Committee to speak about and share them with us. Thank you.
Yeah, another part of that is, maybe we can open that discussion up in more detail at lunch next month.
You'll have a little bit more time to think about it, and you can share with your fellow reps, and Dr. Gillian and Dr. Calentus and myself and Dr. Reeve will be there, and then you can start sharing some more out with that. That'd be great.
We'd love you a great ongoing discussion to have.
Great. Kevin, did you have?
Yeah, no, I actually did. I just had a question for Tom. Oh. No, actually, it's kind of cool. So today, I want you to kind of link in how we used to do the junior PSAT testing day to how you're transitioning that to a Daring day as opposed to a static day. So I think that's actually really cool, and it really fits in kind of well with, you know, the gap. So I thought it was pretty cool. If you could just cover that a little bit.
We think it's pretty cool, too. And this is also at Vernon Hills, so it's both schools that are doing this. So as Mr. Huber mentioned, we used to do just the PSAT for our juniors, and we had various groups testing at different times, but then it became a day where other groups of students, we didn't really have programming for. So what we're doing this year at Libertyville High School is, we have differentiated the day for all four classes of students, freshmen through senior, and the juniors still are taking the PSAT NMSQT test. That's their National Merit Qualifying Test, to be a National Merit Scholar. But for the seniors, the sophomores, and the freshmen, we're running what we call a Daring Day. The seniors are going to have the entire day. One of the central tenets of our Daring mission is that we are asking our students to pursue meaningful pathways to post-secondary pursuits. And so to help them have that time to do that, we're using this Daring Day. For our seniors, they can come to school, both at Vernon Hills or at Libertyville High School, to work on their college essays with some of our English teachers. They can spend the day at home, working on college applications, working with their parents on their FAFSA forms. They can schedule college visits on that day. Or some of them, because they're doing all of that stuff round the clock, may just need the day to catch up on some of their homework for AP Research and things like that. So that's for the seniors. For the freshmen and the sophomores at Libertyville, they will have a day where half the time is spent learning about their post-secondary planning, the college, they're called the CCRI, the Career and College Readiness Indicators. So we're going to be teaching our students about that and teaching them how to not only pursue those things, but document them. And that's going to be happening at Vernon Hills as well. And then for the freshmen and sophomores at Libertyville, we are also working very hard to help them become resilient and healthy, that's part of our mission, and to become aware, that's also part of our mission, so aware of who they are and how they relate to other people. And so we're conducting a project called the Art Impact Project, where all of our students will be engaged in a very interactive art project that helps them not only kind of connect with themselves, but build empathy by connecting with their classmates. And so that'll be the first year we do this, but all of our students, freshmen through seniors, will have an experience that'll help prepare them for the world beyond high school. And our colleagues at Vernon Hills, John, if you want to talk about what Vernon Hills is doing?
Yeah, I won't go into too much detail because it's very similar. The seniors, the exact same thing with college essay work here, college visits. The freshmen, those of you that have been on the board, have heard our board reps talk about our Rite Assembly for the last several years. The Rite Assembly is something that is pretty dear to us as a school, as we work with our freshmen to consider respect, integrity, and trust, and how those three interact to form a student's experience, both with others and with themselves. So we have a nationally-known speaker, we have small groups, we do an open-mic thing, and it's really an attempt to get our kids to consider what it might be like to walk in the shoes of someone else. Really fascinating work, and the feedback that we get from students who have been through it, even those that leave, as we revisit that theme, "Walk a Mile in Someone Else's Shoes", we revisit that theme while they're here at school. Our sophomores, again, we'll do the same CCRI indicator work with our sophomores, but then focusing on that health and resilience, we will have two keynote speakers addressing our sophomores, one on mental health. That's one of the, you know, when Dr. Gerty asked about some of the gaps that we see in our kids, we do a lot of things well, and we do it at a high level. And our kids perform, you know, on just about everything they do, but that creates a certain amount of stress and anxiety. And I can remember, as we interviewed these board reps and talked about some of the things that they might change in a school, that was a theme. Ms. Hessel and I heard those reps even mention that, like, it's a lot here. It's great, but it's a lot. So how do we address that emotional and mental health? And then the other speaker that we'll have is going to be talking about internet safety and some of the pitfalls that students can fall into relative to social media, internet, and the like, something that I think we all are interested in. So, yeah, it's a good question, thanks.
No, I commend you both. Thanks. Thanks for the bounce. Okay. Student school board reps, who would like to go first?
I'm going to start. (laughing) Hotter Pot football is kicking off homecoming this week at the stadium, which is tonight, and my fellow board reps Abby and Hala are currently there, and they are playing with their team, so best of luck to all the seniors and their coaches. And this month, admissions representatives from different colleges and universities and armed forces have started visiting the College Resource Center to share information about their schools with the students. And this is valuable to any prospective students, especially those who have not had a chance to visit the campus in person, or they are still deciding if they want to apply to a specific school or program. And these college visits are open to juniors and seniors. And reps have also been able to answer individual questions as well as give tips on applications and guidelines. Something new at Vernon Hills is we will no longer have senior yearbook quotes in the yearbook. Our school magazine, The Scratching Post, was fast to announce the discontinuation of senior quotes on social media, and students are generally not happy with this decision, and they were quick to comment their opinions on the Instagram post. This decision to discontinue the quotes was made due to arising concerns after incidents with inappropriate quotes at nearby schools. In addition, Libertyville has also discontinued their senior yearbook quotes, and our schools are usually consistent with their policies. In more upbeat news, the girls varsity cross-country team won the Lake County invite for the fourth year in a row. The past week was Yellow Ribbon Week, in which we promoted awareness about mental health and worked to remove any stigmas around the topic. Students wore yellow to show their support, they got Chromebook stickers, and they got to play with our school therapy dog, Basil. A survey was also conducted with our students to see how our school can better serve the mental needs of our students. Also, congratulations to Dreshika Asher and Justina Tua for receiving the 2019 Aspirations in Computing Award. The National Center for Women and Information Technology recognizes students and educators for their academic excellence, leadership, and future goals for girls and women in computing and technology. And both these students were two of over 4,300 applicants from all 50 states, Washington DC, and US territories. And Vernon Hills is also changing its formerly-known sophomore lot into a remote lot that will be free for all students to park at. Sophomores who have paid parking this year will be refunded, as well as any juniors and seniors who are willing to start parking in the remote lot rather than their respective lots. Parking in the remote lot will require students to register their cars with the school, and they will be provided with a hang tab. This is due to the issue of district lots where students started parking and dubbed the Free Lot. The administration has taken action, and now they provide students with a truly free parking opportunity, which is now the Remote Lot. Vernon Hills is also proud to announce the Class of 2020 National Merit semifinalists, Ethan Gurken, Tyler Tran, Kaitlin Koleb, Avery Longdon, Esther Chaw, Elijah Huang, and Alex Yu. Also, congratulations to computer science teacher, Mr. Lucan, for receiving a grant from the Illinois Retired Teachers Association Foundation that will be used for a collaborative project. Vernon Hills computer science students are looking to create an old-fashioned arcade cabinet that allows others to play the games they have programmed themselves. Woods classes will be in charge of creating the cabinet itself, and art students will be in charge of designing the artwork- Ethan Gurken, Tyler Tran, Kaitlin Kolb, Avery Longdon, Esther Chaw, Elijah Huang, and Alex Yu. Also, congratulations to computer science teacher Mr. Lucan for receiving a grant from the Illinois Retired Teachers Association Foundation that will be used for a collaborative project. Vernon Hills computer science students are looking to create an old-fashioned arcade cabinet that allows others to play the games they have programmed themselves. Woods classes will be in charge of creating the cabinet itself, and art students will be in charge of designing the artwork around the cabinet. And finally, the programmers would be creating the games in the main menu. This year, the freshman and sophomore play is called Rose and the Rhyme, and it will premiere on September 21st. And this play is about a town stuck in a curse with a perpetual blizzard, and awesome job to our actors and crew. EKG testing has taken place at Vernon Hills every other year for about eight years now, thanks to the Max Schuitz Foundation, and they said that it was an absolute pleasure to partner with Vernon Hills and to bring the Heart Smart EKG to all the students. And it was on September 11th, 2019. There were 55 adult volunteers that made the screening possible, and they provided Heart Smart EKG to 930 students, and eight of those tested were not Vernon Hills students. They provided 31 free limited echocardiograms, eight were due to EKG results outside of the normal limits, and 23 athletes received an echo due to our extra inspection protocol. The first Dare to Empower Lunch for female identifying students was on September 19th with the theme of Speak Up and Speak Out. This was a new event that began last year and is continuing this year in hopes of providing more confidence and unity for female identifying students and staff. This month, we also practiced all three safety drills, including the lockdown drill, tornado drill, and fire drill in one class period. Open house was on Thursday, September 5th, and Vernon Hills parents walked their students' schedules and got to meet all their teachers. This happened to be on the same day as the Bears versus Packers season opener game and the 100th anniversary of the NFL, and we still had a great turnout. Students in National Honor Society volunteered at this event to point parents in the right direction in the hallways and help them find classrooms. The Ronald McDonald Care Mobile visited our school this past month. It is a portable nurse program that allows some of our students to get their physicals done who may otherwise not have had the opportunity to do so. Finally, last Friday, we had our Fall Recognition Assembly to help students get ready for Homecoming Week, which started today. It was really fun and it got everyone excited for homecoming. Additionally, the theme for the football game on Friday was gold out to support research for pediatric cancer. We sold T-shirts to help raise funds for an organization called Cal's Angels, and throughout the week, different sports teams wore gold accessories such as socks or armbands during their competitions to show their support for this important class. And the homecoming dance is on Saturday night.
Is that it?
What's going on?
That was awesome.
Wonderful.
So for some news at LHS, we want to start off with a few students' successes. So five LHS students were named National Merit Scholarship semifinalists, and another 20 students were named National Merit Commended Students. To highlight two students' successes specifically, we first want to start off with our very own Jessica Lee. She had a highly eventful Friday. She is the creative director for the Illinois Youth Climate Strike, and this Friday, she and the team led the strike in Chicago. Please estimate that roughly 3,000 people were in attendance. We're so proud of Jessica for representing an act of generation, right from LHS, and we want to congratulate her for the op-ed that she had published in the Chicago Sun-Times as well as for appearing on Fox 32 Chicago. Next up, we also want to congratulate Senior Marina Cavathis. She was recognized by the We movement for raising over $340 for We Villages, which are adaptive international development models that combat poverty. So speaking of the daring mission, it's really impressive to see such commendable actions by our students, who are just so young, so wonderful people. So a few school ongoings, we want to talk about homecoming. So all of last week, LHS was in high spirits getting ready for homecoming on Saturday. On the Saturday leading into the week, each day, oh, excuse me, on Saturday leading into the week, we had the annual window painting festivities, and each day of the week had a theme for students to dress up, starting with the drama day on Monday and culminating in the highly competitive color wars on Friday. On Friday, all the greats seriously stepped up their school spirit to get ready for the homecoming assembly, but we're proud to say that the seniors took the lead and won the Spirit Cup for their second year in a row. The assembly highlighted performances from Palms and Cheer, as well as the beloved, the well-beloved Teacher Dance and Guys' Palms Dance. On Saturday morning, many LHS clubs and teams participated in the annual homecoming parade. Marching band reported that they felt it went the smoothest ever in the last four years, and people on Palms reported that even though it was hot out, it was, excuse me, a great parade overall. That evening, LHS hosted a homecoming dance in the main gym. Students had a great time and felt that the DJ was much improved for a few years. The Spanish exchange students, who we will delve into further in a later section, also gave a short speech saying thank you for a great experience, which was heartwarming and high energy in the middle of the dance. We also want to congratulate the wonderful Grace Craft for being our homecoming queen this year. On behalf of all those who attended, we want to thank the staff members who made this
So moving on to football games, although we lost our homecoming football game this year to Warren, it did not stop our students from showing up to support our team. And senior flag football on Wednesday was a huge success. All the girls had so much fun playing and the boys had a great time cheerleading. Both teams, black and team orange, fought hard, ultimately found a way to tie. So the stairwell next to the auditorium has been shut down for a while now, and many students do not know why. Some students have expressed concern about it, wondering whether it might be another asbestos case or a construction issue. Many request that the administration communicate with the student body about any issues similar to this one so that everyone is informed. Open house was a huge success with parents. Parents have now seen what their children's schedules are like and have been able to meet their children's teachers. Moving on to college, Mrs. Belstra, our College Resource Counselor, has been working hard with the counselors and the LSTs to best prepare our seniors for applying to college. Seniors now have a lot more information on how to start their applications and how to reach out if they need help. We had our first senior class meeting on August 28th to introduce the seniors to start thinking about colleges. Since then, there is an application training during lunch and essay writing classes as well with Mrs. Belstra. And Drops of Ink, our student newspaper, has their first issue coming out this Thursday. The students are all super excited to show the school what they have been working on. We've had three Spanish exchange students come to LHS for two weeks, and they were able to experience all different parts of American high school. LHS students filled out a form so that the three exchange students would be able to follow a different person's schedule each day to maintain a dynamic atmosphere. They were able to experience diverse classes, as well as football games and homecoming. Senior Grace Henderson was a part of the exchange program and her family hosted one of the exchange students, Sylvia. Describing the experience, she said, "I loved hosting Sylvia for the past three weeks. It has been amazing to get to know her and learn about the culture of Spain. It has also been cool to introduce Sylvia to America and its culture and see her excitement over all the new things to experience here." The response from the student body has also been wonderful. Everyone has been so kind and welcoming, and I'm grateful for the generosity of the school staff and students.
In fine arts, we have marching band this summer. Band camp, we hosted a change drive in order to raise money for Walt Keegan's band camp. There were pennies on Monday until quarters on Friday, having the band Spirit Cup on the line. They, in the end, presented $3,400 in donation to them. Some fine arts concerts that are coming up is this fall's band concert, which is tomorrow night, the choir festival on October 10th, and the orchestra concert, also known as Fright Night, on October 17th. For athletics, we have the soccer team playing against Benedict Academy on Saturday, September 21st. The homecoming band and varsity cheer team all came out to support them. Senior Maddie Wittenbrink sang the national anthem beautifully. The freshman team was able to play, but the varsity team was called off due to weather delays. For volleyball team, we had a tournament on Saturday at Wheaton Warren. They had won two of their three games after the tournament ran long. A few team members were able to go to homecoming afterwards, so even though they were exhausted, they were still able to participate and have a fun night. Senior Cassidy Jones said of the experience, "During our last game, that was running about an hour and a half behind, we knew that would be able to leave and we would finish in two. So our energy levers were insanely high and we were having so much fun as a team." For cross-country on Saturday, they also had a meet at Adler. It was an infamously hard track, and furthermore, the team had ran in the rain. Bree Ponchak had placed fourth place in the girls varsity race, and Grace Craft, our homecoming queen, had placed third in the girls open race. For wellness, we have our first Wildcat Health and Wellness Group meeting, also known as the WHMW, meeting this October 16th. This meeting will be hosted by Dr. Calentus and Dr. Nelson. They will talk about topics affecting teens at LHS and their perspectives for students. Yellow Ribbon Week was a success this year, with activities each day that spread awareness to what Yellow Ribbon Week was truly about. There were therapy dogs, to-school spirit days, and so much more. We ended off the week with tie-dying shirts as prizes for those who completed the Yellow Ribbon Week scavenger hunt, which included students to go and meet their social workers at each LST. That's it. Thank you.
Great job. You guys are really doing a great job.
Amazing.
I mean, I had mentioned this to the board after we had launched last time, how engaged you are, and just want you to know how much we really appreciate, especially giving us, you know, a good perspective on the things that you care about, including those things you like and maybe some of those things that I'm not so much about. So, great job.
If I could just add, Dr. Grady, we had numbers from our homecoming. We're really proud. We had 1,369 students attend the dance on Saturday night, out of 1,841 for those.
Oh, that's right.
Seventy-four percent of our students attended the dance. Very proud of that.
Thanks.
We'll try to make that next week. Yeah. And if we don't, we won't bring it up.
All right. Great job.
Seventy-four point one percent, I think, so.
Okay. Moving on, superintendent's report.
Yeah, I just want to echo what Dr. Grady just said. You all are doing such a great job that you've only left me two good news pieces that you did not possibly know. All right? So, really good. Thank you. And it's really great to hear that, it's really great to hear that news from you. So, that's really a compliment. So, thank you again. Okay, a couple of other pieces of good news. In the latest edition of Chicago Magazine, District 128 High Schools rank number one, Vernon Hills ranked number four, LHS, among all Lake County high schools. And I think most people in the audience, our public, are aware that several of the highest-performing high schools in the United States are concentrated in Lake County. So, congratulations to John and to Tom. Chicago Magazine does this every two years. Two years ago, we were number one and two, and so it's really great to have that external recognition. And then finally, good news for me, the District 128 Community Education Program was recently recognized by the Lake County Health Department and Community Health Center as an outstanding community health partner. Community Education Program is a host site for mental health first aid certification classes this term in an effort to collaborate with Lake County Health Department to improve mental health awareness in Lake County. Both sessions of the class, which is offered at no cost to participants, were filled to capacity this term. The class will be offered again in the winter-spring term. Diane Phillips is the director of the Community Education Program at District 128. So, you know, great to see us continually involved in the community. One other piece of good news this evening, that the board is certainly aware of, we are hosting tomorrow night the pool dedication ribbon cutting and open house for the new pool at LHS. We will have a brief, and I emphasize brief, a few remarks from myself and Dr. Grady and Dr. Calentus, and then we're basically going to cut the ribbon, dedicate the pool, and allow people a chance to kind of tour around the pool and hand out some passes which will provide them an opportunity to swim in the pool in the near future. So to answer Lisa and Casey's question earlier, yes, you will have a chance to swim in the pool at some point. So, very excited about that, that culmination, like all of our capital projects, of a lot of work, but a really, really cool swimming pool, if you haven't been down there yet. Next on the superintendent's report tonight is the Administrator's Teacher Compensation Report, which is a new report required by the state. Dan, do you want to make a couple of comments about this? We reviewed this again earlier in committee.
Yeah, so it's not a new report. It's been here for a few years now, and we did not review this in committee. So, sorry.
Right, so I guess I'm home for two tonight, so.
I betcha.
Thanks, Dan, for making me look good in front of the board. Appreciate that.
So this is the report for you. It's required by law to be presented to you before October 1st, so it's before October 1st. We were trying to have it for the committee, but we had a problem with our report, and so we've been working to correct that. So here it is for you. This is required to be posted on our website, which we will do so after this meeting or before October 1st, as required by state law. So this is the information that they require us to present, submit to you, and post on there. So, same, similar as last year, so. You got any questions? You don't need to take action on this, this just has to be presented to you and then we post it.
I believe we did comment on this in committee, but just the report, so.
Thanks for bailing me out, Jim. Dan, we need to have a conversation. Just kidding. Okay. Anything else to add that's good on that? Okay. Mark, LHS pool parking update. So that would be the current LHS pool, maybe the new pool, or the repermeable of the old pool.
Well, I can combine them all together. As Prentice mentioned, we're having ribbon cutting tomorrow night at Libertyville High We're moving forward with punch list items, working on the exterior doors that had come in. Those are installed, working on lock system, our security system, those things that are all connected to the doors. So we've got good progress on that. At the old pool renovation, I believe I told you the concrete slab had been poured down for the dance area. We're moving forward, they poured some other concrete, and we're ready to start with installing some steel structures to hold up the floor span in the pool area, as well as working forward with the continuum of some plumbing and electrical inside the building. For Vernon Hills, if you all had a chance to drive by at some time, last week, they got the first floor deck put on, and they've already got a lot of the walls for the second floor up. They've been working on the first floor, putting bearing walls in underneath the span creep decking, so that's moving forward, and they've started steel erection and part of the roof structure for the stem slab is in place right now. We're continuing to move forward with piping installation and brackets and things for the cafeteria expansion, and we're working out for the gym expansion, still working diligently on the issue we have with the drain pipes for underneath the pool, in the main pool drain, making sure that we properly relocate them and we make sure we properly span them so we don't have any issues in the future. And then there's one other item for Prentice's good news report. Last Thursday at LHS, if you remember quite a few months back, IDOT came and cut down a bunch of old growth trees in front of the school. Last Thursday, IDOT showed up at the property and asked if they could park the trucks on the property so they could plant eight new trees along the roadway. So those eight trees have been planted. The report told me they were going to plant, they're between 10 and 15 feet tall, so that is good news for the area outside the softball field there. We started another row of trees.
Did we know they were growing?
We did not know they were.
Well, that's been consistent, Diane.
Yeah, I just want to say for the record, we're very appreciative of the trees.
Very.
It would have been nice if we could have had this entire conversation when the trees were going down, like, we're going to take the trees down and we're going to plant new trees in both Village, Terry, Muckler, and the Village, and we could have communicated that to everyone in town, and I think that would have helped with a lot of angst. But regardless, again, we're happy to have the trees, probably three-inch trees, you said, probably 15.
About two to three-inch trees.
So 10 to 15 years from now, it'll be beautiful. So, you know, it'll be gorgeous. So that's really kind of a nice turnabout of things. Mark, can, oh, go ahead.
I was able to find out who the person in charge of Northern Lake County was, is in charge of planting trees along the roadways, and I gave the person a call, and on behalf of the district, I thanked him for, you know, moving forward and surprising us with eight new trees.
Mark, one other question that we haven't talked about in a little while, and then I think we talked about in committee, but the swale or retention area by the I think we talked about in committee, but the swale or retention area by the softball field, can you talk about kind of the process to kind of take the weeds out and finish landscaping that area over there?
It looks better now.
Yeah.
When we did the expansion, that contractor, where we had to expand the detention area for the additional parking that we put on the west side of the property, that contractor has finished her work. The other contractor was coming in, and we had the rain, and it filled up with water, and so, looking for an update, I looked at the long-term forecast by this weekend, and next week, there's plenty of rain coming, so. I don't have an update for you from our construction manager is when they will start, but now is the time for them to be planting all those plants that go into detention areas.
So, the weeds will be taken out.
The weeds will be taken out, yes.
And then there's landscaping that.
Then the landscaping goes back in and then.
That area we just to give it a little mental.
To a certain point, and then, you know, it's a wet bottom detention area.
The goodness is the detention systems.
And we've had the rain in Cleveland, so that's actually the good news.
Hey, my one question, any update on the remediation of the tile on the pool? Is that fixing those?
Where we had the bits.
Yes, so we've brought the contractor out, the construction manager. We assessed the area, and the tile has been ordered. So, they're in the process of, we'll need to schedule for the work to be done and work it around our schedule.
So, they've agreed to do it, though?
They've agreed to do it, yes.
And the only thing, it's a long stretch of tile, not necessarily super wide, but it's not a one-day job. So, we will schedule that around use of the pool, and I think most of you are familiar, even during the year, we have to do routine maintenance on both of the pools. So, sometimes we have to shut the air holes down, we have to drain it, and we have to do, you know, routine maintenance. So, that's not outside the scope of things that we would normally do and things that we can't manage. Would that be correct, Mark? And in the interim, we were looking for some kind of.
In the interim, we bought some madding.
Just to cover that area that's got a little bit more buildup.
To help with pounding, or the puddling's going on. So, we bought some madding to test it, to make sure that the water would drain underneath it and not cause any more issues, and it seemed to be working fine. So, at the end of last week, we ordered additional madding. We're expecting it hopefully by the end of this week.
Okay, very good. Okay, anything else on that, on reports about everything that's going on? I would suggest to the board that next month, when we have committee meetings, we can take the opportunity, take ten minutes and walk down and take a look at the old pool. And then we're going down here, and before the weather turns, we have a few more weeks, maybe even next month's board meeting, we can again take a ten-minute walk outside and take a look at what's going on at Vernon Hills, okay? So, once the weather, as we know, once the weather gets bad, none of us are going to want to go outside, right? Take a look at where we stand.
So, can we talk about the fieldhouse?
Yes, yes, that was the other thing that we were talking about, the fieldhouse. Dan recently took a tour over at Libertyville. Dan, I don't know if you've done Vernon Hills yet, but is going to do Vernon Hills. And so, one of the things that we've spent some time on at committee is, again, trying to look forward, what are some other capital needs that we have? And there are two things that we've really identified and probably targeted on behalf of the board, and what is the condition of the existing fieldhouse at Libertyville High School, and then kind of the genesis of that over a period of time. And secondly is learning spaces and the organization of learning spaces in the building. So, what we talked about in committee, for the public's sake, it wasn't at the committee meeting, what we talked about is we're going to gather information in both of those areas. In fact, we're already working on the learning spaces, but we don't, we do want you to have a chance to see the fieldhouse and kind of where it's at right now, and then we can have, you know, a bit more discussion as we're flushing some of that out for the board, okay?
I have a quick question. In these construction projects that are happening on both campuses during the school year, are there any classes that the students are taking that would benefit from kids seeing some of these things from time to time to kind of learn a little bit about some of those dreams about what they might want to go into? I mean, I don't know, maybe that's, I can't really think of a class right now off the top of my head, but I wonder if you guys obviously are going to understand it.
Any STEM class? Do we teach a CAD class?
Oh, we do. Architectural CAD, I mean, geometry classes, we have shop classes. There's always the issue of bringing kids out into those spaces.
Even if, so even if some of those people who came in the process spoke, like the guy, I apologize, it's always forgets his name, but the guy that managed the project.
Matt.
From a project management standpoint, that's a whole career discipline, so I'm sure he.
Sure is, and our own Mr. Kelly can contribute to that because that's what he used to do. So.
Anyway, just to.
Yeah.
Because people enjoy going to see some of these spaces, and they know obviously their safety is above all support, but.
One other, just one other. So, if we're going to do tours, the committee meeting next year, next week, or next month, right? Can we flip P and P and F and F, and so we run over on the tours? We're not holding up the P and P?
Sure, sure, yeah. And really, we used to do them, you remember, we used to do P and P first, C and F and F, and we really changed that schedule to accommodate when our board members just come along the line. So, we can do that every month if you wanted to do that, but we can certainly do it this month.
What are you going to say? Do you want to do that permanently or not?
Well, why don't we do it once, then you guys can talk about it at committee? I mean, that's fine.
Certainly, if we do a tour, I don't want to rush the tour. I want to be able to take our time and go through those buildings if we could, that's what I'm up to.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, all right, good. Anything else on that? Okay, freedom of information requests for this month. And as always noted, the response deadline is five business days after you receive a request, twenty-one working days for commercial request, and an extension is allowed under certain circumstances, which we would work with legal counsel on. Okay, FOIA request received on eight-twenty-two thousand nineteen, response deadline eight-twenty-seven-two thousand nineteen. The requester was Evelyn Gomez from the Assistant Director of Enrollment at the National Hispanic Institute in Maxwell, Texas. Information requested was to obtain copies of public records of directory information, name, address, city, state, zip, phone, email, high school, and grade level of honor roll students from high school graduating classes of two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-two. The organization will be inviting them to learn about some of the leadership programs and scholarships only eligible to suit to qualify academically. Brian Kelly did the follow-up, responded on eight-twenty-six-two thousand nineteen, approximate time spent thirty minutes. The second FOIA request this month was received on eight-five-two thousand nineteen. Commercial request deadline response was nine-four-two thousand nineteen. Requester was Bethany Simpson from Smart Procure. They requested all purchasing records from five-six-two thousand nineteen to current, including purchase order number, purchase date, line item details, line item quantity, line item price, vendor ID number, name, address, contact person, and their email address. Follow-up is done by Rose DeSeco, who's one of Dan's assistants in the office, responded on nine-four-two thousand nineteen, approximate time spent was thirty minutes. Next on the superintendent's report tonight, the board has a live copy of this card, again, part of our ongoing communication process to reach out and engage all community members beyond parents who are active in the school district right now. We began this last year by sending this card out. On the backside of the card is information on how to connect with us and be a part of virtually all the information that we put out, including our weekly e-pub prints, any special things. And so, this postcard has gone out today, Mary, right? So, should be in mailboxes, you know, between tomorrow and, let's say, Thursday, and people will have the opportunity to sign up. So, we would encourage not only board members and administrators in our two buildings, but also community members, if you have neighbors that are looking to connect with us, and taxpayers that are looking to connect with us and follow us, please encourage them to use the card to sign up for the information. They will get everything everyone else gets in terms of information. Next on other, here at the beginning of the year, as students and parents are aware, we've had a couple of soft lockdowns in both of the schools, at L H S and B H H S, for some activity that was going on in the community. And so, we're reminded again that it's very important, as we've started the school year, that we all have a responsibility, you know, to hear something or see something, okay? We need to let somebody know something in this school building. And although, you know, there was no real cause for concern for us, working with our first responders, first responders, we know from experience and working with our first responders that our kids in our community are our best line of intelligence, regardless of all the other security measures that we've taken. So, I know Dr. Gilliam and Dr. Kalentis will continue to write those messages home in the community, and we also want to remind parents, we'd rather have you call and let us run out the ground ball and find out there's nothing there, and it was just a rumor, as opposed to finding out that there was something significant there. So, we appreciate everyone's support. Our number one priority every single day is the health and safety of our staff and our students. We cannot teach and learn if our kids are not safe and our staff is not safe. And then last for me tonight, Pat, before we move on to the consent agenda, I spent late Wednesday afternoon and all day Thursday and Friday at the annual Mid-America Association of School Superintendents, called MAS. It is the oldest regional superintendent's group in the United States. It has a very long history with some very prolific superintendents and very influential superintendents in it. The organization encompasses twelve Midwest and Great Plains states. It is capped at a hundred members, and its uniqueness historically is that it is a superintendent's think tank. It's not a presenter-driven conference. It is a focus-question-driven conference, and it's a great opportunity to pick the brains and learns from superintendents across the Midwest and the Great Plains. But interestingly, this year, the number one focus this year was social, emotional, and mental health of students and staff. So, just following up on some of our conversations, so across this great Midwest and Great Plains State, the number one issue that people are working on is to ensure that students and their staff, okay, are healthy physically and mentally and emotionally. Second was flexible learning spaces. Does that sound, is all this sounding familiar? Okay, flexible learning spaces and how to create those spaces so teaching can and learning can continue to adapt. And then lastly, and I think this is going to sound familiar too, student voice in decisions that affect what students learn and do in school. So, as you can see, there's a lot of concurrence and continuity in what we're pursuing in the district with other school districts across the Midwest, and that's always a great organization. And I had the honor to serve as president of that group a couple of years ago, and I'm still on the board of that group, and it's a very, very worthy organization for lots of reasons, kind of sharing, being at the top. So, Pat, with that, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Great, hey, just a couple comments. Mary, when you get a chance, maybe a couple months down the road, let us know how many people.
Sure.
Just curious what kind of response we get.
We're just under six thousand subscribers right now, so.
That's good, actually. A lot, yeah. I'd be curious how many more we get. Six thousand's pretty good. Okay. And just one comment on the lockdowns, too. So, one, I'm real impressed with the communication between the first responders, police department, and the district. That's been great, but equally impressed, your communications have been very timely out to us. Thank you, and I certainly appreciate that as well, so.
And just thank you, certainly, and we want to always communicate in a timely manner in the middle of whatever's going on, but we can only do that with great information and timely information from John and Tom and their teams at both of the buildings. So, you know, and that's something that's part of our security plan, and we continue to work on, so. Okay, great. Thanks, Pat.
Okay, next, the consent vote agenda is listed. We reviewed this two weeks ago, so if I could just ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed?
Somewhere.
Second, any discussion? Tom, roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel. Aye. Hubert.
Aye.
Lundstedt. Aye. Grudy. Aye.
All right, motion carried. Next, the facilities and finance committee, Chair President Huber.
All right, so we met on Monday, September ninth, five-thirty. We talked a lot about what Mark and Dan went over already, added to that, we talked a little about solar at various high schools, how we potentially were not enter into that. We talked about it, but we're also demolishing one of our new properties that we're controlling property, it's kind of a vacate, so. There's really only one action item out of the committee, and that is to approve a bid to spray installations, anchor one hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred for spray fireproofing work at Vernon Hills High School additions and Libertyville High School pool renovation projects. I mean, we have that motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Did you see the amount of bid that you mentioned?
Yeah, okay.
Just to clarify, it's spray installations incorporated as the vendor's award, is it? And you said, at least, sorry?
I said.
Okay. All right, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel. Aye. Hubert.
Aye.
Lundstedt. Aye. Grudy. Aye. Batson.
Aye.
Any other facility of finance? Saying none, we're done, thanks.
Okay. You have program personnel, Chairperson Batson.
Thank you, Dr. Grudy. We have a couple items here that came in after our meeting, or earlier in the month. One is an educational tour requested, we need an approval for, and this is for the girls' tennis competition in Bloomington, Illinois. Four and five.
I motion to approve the educational tour request as listed. Second.
Questions, comments?
A quick question, yeah. Why do we vote for this?
Normally, we go on the consent agenda because we've reviewed it in committee, but this came in after the committee meeting?
Right. No, what I mean is.
Oh, why do we do it?
This is just a tennis competition. Doesn't that just run through the athletic director?
Well, it does, Don, and we can change this, of course, but our history is that if it's out of the area, we always bring it to the board, because we just want you to have knowledge of it. We're not, you would not legally be required to vote on it.
Right, but if they're going to Hinsdale, we wouldn't be doing it.
Right, exactly. If we were going to Stevenson for a wrestling meet, yeah, she would not approve.
Overnight.
The contract, yeah. Since it's two days. Thank you.
No, that's a good question.
It's a great question.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel. Aye. Hubert.
Aye.
Lundstedt. Aye. Grudy. Aye. Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Passes. We have a handful of employment of employees that, again, came in after the committee meeting, so they were not included on the consent agenda, so can we have a motion to approve?
To approve the employment of employees.
Second. Any questions or comments on this? Roll call, please.
Hessel. Aye. Hubert.
Aye.
Lundstedt. Aye. Grudy. Aye. Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Grudy. Aye.
Passes. Item C is first reading of board policies. We actually discussed these briefly. There's policy four, colon, thirty, of revenue and investments, and then under instruction, policy six, colon, two forty, field trips and educational tours. This is just a first reading. We'll have a second reading and adoption in October, but just a.
And just a review, there were another policy that we're going to look at again at the next committee meeting, but in Board Policy six-two-four-zero, the one case that we did look at in the new writing in the third, sorry, in the policy in the third paragraph of the new writing, and it said, "Parents and Guardians of Students." For number two, we had "are responsible." We have changed it to "may be responsible for all entrance fees, food lodging, and other costs." So, from our discussion at committee meetings, we changed the wording.
It's a subtle change, but I think it clarifies what we all discussed in the meeting, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll revisit those next month?
Okay, so we'll revisit those things, huh?
Jim, I just...
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just on that one, too. Can I ask a question? Why, or is it necessary to have the word "prior approval" in there? And the only reason I say that is because it's going to be good, best practice, of course, to do prior. But in some cases, prior may not be feasible and things like that. Is that... And it's only there twice. It says, "Prior approval." At the very, it's like, all field trips must have the superintendent, doesn't need prior approval. I think it reads fine if you were just approval. And I think it says also when it has to have the board prior approval. So again, just a question on...
So the prior approval is that you're getting approval before the field trip or the educational tour happens?
Again, best practice, yeah, I think everybody would assume that. But I don't know if 100%, in 10 years or 12 years of people been here, if that's always the case.
So it would have to have somebody's approval to get you...
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think to that point, we would, somebody on the administration, we need to know that somebody's going if we missed a field trip or something. So that would allow, let's say, me or my designated, in that case, it would normally be Brian, for example, just to grant that approval and say, oops, yeah, we did miss you going to Geneva for regional whatever, right, moving forward. So somebody would have to know in prior approval.
Maybe it's more the board's...
Yeah. Sometimes we don't agree quickly enough.
I think, yeah, probably just 100%. It's the board. Because sometimes I think we need to do a hiccup where they wanted to go, we didn't have a board meeting, you go ahead and approve it, and then...
And then we tell you after the...
Which is 100% fine, but if you have the word "prior" in here, it becomes a little bit...
Although to some extent, if you take it out, then there's no requirement for us to approve them, so.
Might be said, just as a approval. Just as it's saying prior approval.
Instead of prior approval.
Brian, I...
No, again, since this is first reading, we find the...
I mean, I like to keep the prior approval so that our staff, we can point to it and tell our staff that we need to get prior approval from the board. And it makes, you know, everyone plan ahead on, you know, money situation, approval, and everything.
Okay, and then it still allows us, to use Kevin's scenario, which is a good one, and we've had that before. It still allows me or me or Brian, let's say you as a designated, to sign off on a trip and then tell the board after the fact that, you know, we had to sign off on that one just because of timing.
As long as you guys are good with it, perfectly fine. Back to the other one now, investments. I didn't, I don't know why they made this at the committee meeting, so I apologize. Are we devaluing the responsibility of the... Well, first off, who is the chief benefit business official? Okay.
He's not wearing his crown tonight, but he should.
I know you're assistant superintendent, I know you're CFO, I didn't also know you're CBO.
No, so I'm not actually, I'm not a CFO, so technically, my title is Assistant Superintendent for Finance slash CSBO. That has to be in my title.
So we're good there?
Yeah, I'm Chief School Business Official. It's part of my relationship.
And are we, again, we have a lot of objectives, authorized investments, blah, 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 that we are striking through.
So a lot of that is clarity. We have a lot of things that are said several times in that policy. So it, you know, I don't have it in front of me, but it was reviewed within the last 10 years. But then, other than that, it hasn't, it probably hasn't changed much in a long time. And so we're kind of looking at, kind of realigning that to a lot of what press has now. And to just keep it simple, like, you don't have to really state the philosophy so many different times, the standard of care. You really only need to say once, you don't need to say it, you know, two or three different times in there. So that, that's really the gist of a lot of the changes practically. It doesn't change anything that we're doing. The only thing that we're proposing that changes is that the board annually reviews and approves the depositories that we have. And right now, there's no requirement for that in the policy. You absolutely, I think it's best practice for sure, no, we're adding that.
Yeah, we're straining that one. But again, we're getting rid of the definition of authorized investments, striking that out. Definition of diversification, striking that out. So again, Bill Lehman, who reads this, it certainly looks like you're getting rid of four pages of stuff that's actually good controls diversification, authorized investments, financial institutions must provide audited financial statements, you know, brokers, dealers, things like that. And you're striking all that through, and I didn't see any replacement for that. So again, just on a basic read of a seven-page lineout, it goes, wow, you're really getting rid of a lot of controls. And what are you putting in to make sure that we have authorized investments, diversification, broker dealers have audited financials, and things like that?
Yeah, so I think there are a lot of the language. I can't recall exactly any language that was added off the top of my head, but a lot of the changes we're making is really to streamline because it's already stated in that policy that you don't need to state your investment objectives twice. That's a lot of what we saw, which tends to happen in some policies that evolve over time. They can have some built-in redundancy. And eventually, they can have conflicting information. That one says something, and then the other part says the same thing but slightly different. We wanted to make sure that this was consistent and simple. That really got after the protection of the district's investments by authorized clear, clear, we're authorized to invest in and just kind of make it more simple.
Are you comfortable?
Absolutely.
Are you comfortable?
Yes.
Okay, I'm comfortable. Well, so I would... Okay, go ahead, Lisa.
My suggestion would be, since this language that we're taking out appears either specifically or implicitly elsewhere, when we do our second reading, would someone just point out where that already exists? And where the, so that we can just confirm that it's redundant information that appears elsewhere?
Or set slightly differently. You got all this red line stuff, looks like so much is coming out. Let's look at a clean copy and just read it and say, are we comfortable with that? All right? Does that make sense? If we could get the clean copy.
Then we can go into so much detail on our committee. Yeah, that's good, that's what committees are for, that's great.
I apologize for messing with you. No, that's good, that's the first committee. Never too late, my bad. Never too late.
Better to, yeah, better to keep that...
Okay, so no need for voting anything under other for... Okay?
Okay. Seidel?
Yep, Seidel, okay. We had our quarterly governing board meeting on August 28th, where we approved the final budget, was presented and approved for 1920, $71,888, excuse me, $88,990. Expecting estimated fund balance to be about $18 million. The first item, agenda item was, action item. The second was to approve the collective bargaining agreement that had been formed with the LSSA, SEDAL Support Staff Association. Three-year contract is approved, it's a cost of even 5% a year. And then on to, SEDAL is really experiencing kind of a perfect storm, bit of a crisis situation in staffing. And it's just spiraling, all different kinds of tenants are coming from different places to create really a really frightening dire... So, yeah, so during the public comment time, there were probably at least 17 staff members, one parent who spoke, shared statements about concerns with our own safety and the safety of the students. There's a lot of reasons why those staffing vacancies exist. The one thing is there just aren't a lot of people applying. But part of it is that the educational support personnel requirement's been changed by the state of Illinois. And so the requirement's been raised to have a certain amount of more college education. And they aren't allowed to be taking, it used to be allowed to take a test to show that they had the requirements. And so they're working with the legislator to reverse that or to change that back, but that won't happen until November. In the meantime, there just aren't people applying. There, things are, things are being moved around all over the place there to try to accommodate all these vacancies. And it's just creating a real rough situation. Friday, actually, school's canceled because there weren't too many people called in. The Herald, excuse me, yeah, it's one of the schools that changed. The administration is working diligently to try to find out ways creatively, trying to find out ways to address this. They are raising the, temporarily raising the pay for substitute teachers. That seems to be helping a little bit, bringing in retired people to try to help with all the different tensions. Temple of this are just, SEDAL affects so many different people in so many different ways. And I won't go through all of it. But it's really, really a grave situation. At the executive board meeting on Thursday, which our director, Special Patient Kelly Carwings, was there, and, yeah, and she was able to report back. They, you know, she sees all the different things that they're doing, but they've frozen new students coming into three of the different facilities because they just can't accommodate them. Again, there, I don't know if you remember back in the spring, another thing that contributes to this is that they've really discovered that some of the teachers or paras aren't following protocols in how to use restraint, restraining students in some of these situations. Because that's really necessary. And so then they're reviewing tapes over a month of all the teachers, and then having to go back and do some retraining. And the teachers are feeling like they're really under the microscope. And so it's just really, really emotional. And from a teacher's perspective, if they're, if you're listening to their voices and the things that they're sharing at the meeting, it was really troubling in that you just could feel their pain. And you knew that there are, you knew that there are a lot of things going on to try to address these needs. And they're not in short term. I mean, it's just not going to be a hard thing to figure out. So there, it looks like at the executive board meeting, both the union rep and another teacher, again, gave public comments and talked about it. At the meeting on August 28th, the union representative gave up. The notice were mediated, it's really filed agreements against SEDAL and the administration for the lack of safety. And they passed that around to everyone and, you know, were citing that they would take legal action if things do, so it's very serious. But there are so many things in place that are trying to remedy the situation. And I'm not sure how you speak it along. So I just wanted you all to be aware of it. You've read about it in the paper, maybe you've heard about it from people with children involved. I've met several times with Kelly, Dr. Prentice, you know...
Jennifer Vell.
Yes, Vell, the superintendent is really addressing some of the concerns that we had was that she wasn't identifying enough with the staff and was too distant. She held some smaller meetings with the governing boards and shared with us that she spent three days in the classrooms that week. She's just, she's brand new, she's trying to figure out how to manage this. And it really, to me, it feels like a perfect storm of different things that have come into place, many of which are beyond anybody's control. So I just wanted you all to be aware of that. And I'll continue to update you as things progress. But it certainly is a fluid situation that is still very much okay.
I think Vell is trying to work closely with Kelly and her colleagues. As they strategize together. But I think you've heard us talk about this before, but this is kind of a classic example of a law that was passed and a piece of the law where the question wasn't asked, what is the unintended consequence? So this issue with educational support staff is a dramatic issue across the whole state. And because it was part of the law, okay, ISBE cannot go in and say, okay, we're just going to change this. So the legislators never intended this to happen. They never intended that change to result in the fact that districts could not hire people that are already in the pipeline that have taken the basic skills test because they can no longer use... So nobody got grandfathered in. Again, nobody intended that to happen. It was a legislative oversight. For those that follow legislation, unfortunately, that happens from time to time, particularly in education, when they don't have educators really review the law closely before they pass it. So it cannot be resolved because it's law until they're back in November. So this is one of the extreme cases of where, like, it really matters because in the level of service that SEDAL is providing, particularly for high-need students, we have to have those people in place. So it's, it's just created this tumble effect. But it's not only in special education, and it's throughout the state of Illinois, where there are needed educational support people that cannot be hired until they change the law. So we're going to have kind of this drag for probably six months until we can get people in the pipeline and we can get them hired. So it is what it is, and it's not a good is what it is, right? So, but that's certainly added to that. So Karen's highlighted nicely that part of the strategy is we just have to free some of the enrollment because we don't have the staff to safely deal with the kids. And it's what we've got to do until we can get caught up and get enough staff in there, so.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Karen, thanks for, Karen's done a nice job of following that, attending meetings, certainly worked you and Kelly and even me in terms of just connecting, so.
Okay, IASB, James.
Yeah, just real briefly, each of you received this document in your board back at this last week. Just so you know, I represent this board, this district, on this committee, on this resolutions committee. Take a look at these if you care to. I'll be voting on or for or against many of these things. There's some new ones in there. A lot of it having to do with student safety. School safety issues are the new ones. There's a couple minor changes to some existing ones. And then just a reaffirmation of some longstanding ones. But if you get a chance, take a look. Let me know if you have some concerns with the positions that the IASB has taken these. And that way, I can reflect our collective, you know, interest at that meeting in November.
Can I ask, actually, for both you and Dr. Lee, it seemed like the safety ones were things that we had already incorporated in our policies. So selfishly, I'm reading and thinking about D128.
Sure.
It doesn't look like there's anything that would impact what we're doing because we're going above and beyond many of the things.
That's true. That's a good assessment. Lisa. Yeah, and in some cases, it's, you're right, it's sort of trying to, it's still best practices across the state. In a couple cases, you'll find some things that are very specific to a district or a set group of districts. I know there's a couple in here or a region of the state. So it's, yeah, it's interesting to read through those. But it is, you know, what's applicable to us or what we find commonplace is not necessarily the case throughout the state. Well, the board will remember about a year ago, maybe a year and a month, that the issue that was being debated in IASB was teachers carrying guns in schools. And you remember, we got bombarded by people telling you that you needed to vote this way or that way when it was a state law that actually had to. So some of these generate a lot of attention, right, in terms of the ultimate position. I think in that case, they voted not to support that resolution. Right. When you had... Yeah, when you remember, we talked about this, if you get out of the metro area, there are school districts that are 60 miles away from a town in law enforcement, right? And they have the same security concerns that we do. So regionally, it's, you know, kind of a huge issue for some places in the state. But up here, most of the districts would say in law enforcement, no way we want staff having guns in schools, right? We're going to protect you, etc. But that's a good example that those, support or read those policies for us to be knowledgeable about, you know.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing on. Hey, one thing, the tri-conference in November, is there a final agenda published yet?
I think it's kind of...
Is there one?
Yeah, it's on line.
Okay.
Okay.
Remember, look at it. All right. Okay, so we're going to convene an executive session tonight. Subject is employment of an employee, ILCS 120/2C1. I'd ask for a motion to convene an executive session.
Right, second.
You want to score the beers up left and right?
Bears?
Oh, yeah.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Batsen.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
All right, motion carries again. No action following the executive session.
Karen, get it started.